Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of September 10th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Before we get to the regular agenda, could I have a motion to add, so we could recognize a passing of a town employee? Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Wanted to take a moment and recognize the passing of Richard or Dicky Souza to his friends. Dicky was on the Bristol Police Department for just shy of thirty years. He was the municipal court bailiff for... Madam Clerk, I don't know if you know how long it was, but I know it was more than a few years, so...
So, at least twelve, but I don't know the exact number. My apologies.
So, we'll say forty years of municipal service, which is truly impressive. Certainly, our hearts and our prayers and our well-wishing thoughts go to his family, to his friends, to his former colleagues. He was someone that was, I would call him a fixture around town. Someone that gave a lot back to the community just by time, never mind... And that's just the two things that we are recognizing here as town service, but he did a lot more than that. Colleagues, did you want to share anything?
I knew Dick for quite a while, for too many years. But anyway, he was also involved with the Bristol Athletic Hall of Fame. He was actually a great proponent of that and supporter. He was always looking to recognize the folks who deserve the recognition, and certainly, he'll be greatly missed.
Excellent. Anyone else? Thank you. So, again, we're sorry to his family and his friends for his passing. We thank him for all the time and all, more importantly, what he gave back to the community, to Bristol. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item of business is the Town Council meeting minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. To approve, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You?
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is the Director of Community Development Williamson, and this is in regards to application for zoning map change of two fourteen Franklin Street LLC for the southerly portion of two fourteen Franklin Street from an R six residential six thousand zone to a rehab LDP urban rehab land development project overlay zone. This is public hearing, second reading for adoption.
So, before I open the public hearing, Diane, could you just take a quick moment before I open the public hearing and just explain? There's a lot here, but I don't think we need to go through all of it, but just the high-level changes that are being proposed?
Sure. So, this is in conjunction with the redevelopment of Unity Park. This is a property on the south side of Franklin Street adjacent to the Unity Park property that is in a residential zone. Unity Park is looking to expand and continue with their redevelopment, and they would like to incorporate this residential parcel into their parking so that they have adequate parking and circulation for the uses that they're proposing. Because it is in a residential zone, it cannot have parking for the adjacent property, which is in a manufacturing zone. So, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property. There's a house, a two-family house, two fourteen Franklin Street. That lot will remain in the residential zone and be subdivided out of the rest of the property, which will be in the, if you approve tonight, the manufacturing zone. They have gone to the planning board for the master plan review of this. The planning board did support it. You have their recommendations. And if this is approved tonight, they'll be back to the board to finish that process on this portion of the project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based on the recommendation?
We're gonna, it's okay. So, I'm gonna open it up to the public, and the council will, and typically does, hold its opinion until we close the public hearing. So, this is now the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? I would have been surprised.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is William Dennis. I'm an attorney with offices here in Bristol, and I'm actually here representing the applicant, two fourteen Franklin LLC. This company is the owner of the lot in question. And as Diane explained, the lot in question is a very large and deep lot which fronts on Franklin Street. There's a two-family home that exists on Franklin Street with a very long and narrow rear yard, if you will. The proposal is to separate the two-family home and ten thousand square feet of land adequate for that home and let that stay in the R six zone. But the rear of this large parcel, about twenty-six thousand square feet of land and adjacent to other Unity Park property, we would ask that that zone be changed to the urban rehab LDP so that it might become part of the development with the rest of Unity Park. You know, your applicant is of a mind that this will assist us in developing the successful Unity Park, and it will also support the economic interests of the town. So, we are in favor, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Before Mr. Dennis leaves, is there any questions from the council? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. And listen to a CB.
I just, can I just, I just have to correct myself. I misspoke and said the rest of the Unity Park was in a manufacturing zone. It's actually in the rehab LDP. It used to be in a manufacturing zone.
Like happens sometimes. We actually knew what you meant, so...
Thank you.
But thank you for that clarity. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, I'd like to take a second. First, we had the planning board in full agreement. Diane, was HDC there too? And they weren't also full agreement, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Mr. Burdo, I think you've done an outstanding job at five hundred Wood Street. I think that for myself, this is a very appropriate next step. I think the, I was very happy to hear that there was no suggestion about removing the current home there with all the efforts made by this council for affordable housing and otherwise, so outstanding on that. I think this is very appropriate. It's adjacent to the property. I think it makes sense. And because there is a wonderful history there, not a long history, but a very good history of the improvements. I've said often, multiple times, that my mom grew up with her fourteen, well, she was one of fourteen brothers and sisters on Shaw's. And when I was a kid, we would drive by, and it was not the best-looking place. And my goodness, what a difference. And I think this keeps in mind and continues that forward progression. So, I'm in favor of it. Colleagues?
Colleagues, Chairman, I'm also in favor of this as well. And I'd just like to say, the property is completely turned around. It's gonna vitalize, underutilize in that aging area. So, I'm so excited, because I grew up riding down to my grandmother down Franklin Street, and I remember just seeing this dilapidated old factory that my, actually, my grandfather used to work in. So, I'm just so excited to see this coming alive, and you're doing such a great job, Joe, and your team is doing a great job. This also is great for economic and tax benefits for us. The neighborhood vitality, it's going to bring back to that area. It aligns with our comprehensive plan, and it also adds more housing and business options. So, you know, for me, it's a win-win. And so, I just wanted to express my thoughts on this. I'm very much in favor of it.
Any other?
Basically, pretty much, you know, it's already been echoed, all of the accolades and all of the improvements that have been made to the area. And you can hear that from the residents. They constantly compliment that, you know, that they don't have to look to an area that was lepidated at one time.
Perfect.
I'd say it's a great project. I mean, I think we're all so happy that Joe Burdo took it over, took it on, and is doing such a fabulous job. So, we're here to help facilitate in any way we can.
So, just need a motion then?
So, based on the recommendations from the, the planning board as well as the Star Commission, I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary. To approve, any discussion?
Excuse me, I'm gonna... Diane, does this also need to be consistent with the, the general purpose of the comprehensive plan? Does the motion also need to include that it's consistent with the zoning in the comprehensive plan? So, I'm sorry, the motion needs to include that.
That's what I said.
That's it, okay. Thanks.
This is, I was mentioning this earlier. That's what we heard too. Yes, absolutely. All right. So, there was a...
Thank you.
A cleared-up motion. We'll call it that, and was seconded by Mary. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C one. This is ordinance number twenty twenty-five-nine, chapter twenty-two, sewers, sewers and sewer, sewage disposal, sorry. Article five, section twenty-two, one oh nine, article seven, and article eight. This is second reading, and...
And this is going to be continued. I spoke with the clerk a little bit earlier, and she conveyed information from the sewer department, water pollution, which is that in order, in order to align with the needs of DEM, having public notice requirements and comment section, we need to continue this to, believe it or not, our December tenth meeting. I know. I was kind of surprised myself, but it gives more than enough time to make sure everything's in line. And anything like this has a lot of advertising. If we don't push it out far enough, we could have to re-advertise, which is just a waste of money, so.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to continue this item to the December tenth.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion?
Just wanted to bring up that, to my colleagues, I think we should be setting some of these ordinance to a resolution so we can quickly change, you know, make changes if we need to on the fly and rather going through an all ordinance process, but I just wanted to bring that up. I think we should be considering that as we go when we do these.
Andy?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't have the authority to do this like we do with the rest of our fees and have a particular res... We have one ordinance that authorizes a resolution, and then we can do it by resolution. But the state law only authorizes cities and towns to do this, to enact ordinances assessing these fees. So, we have to do this one.
We have to do it this way. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Tim, continue asking that question, because it's a cost saver, it's a time saver, and I think it was a great point, so.
Great. Thank you.
So, we had a motion and a second.
If I may, if I may, section twenty-two, two thirty-six. There's the word coordinator and director is being used interchangeably. Is this supposed to be one or the other, or is two different individuals involved, something to look at? That's section twenty-two, two thirty-six. And then, on section twenty-eight, three sixteen, I thought there should be twenty-two, three sixteen, maybe, rather than twenty-eight? Am I correct? Or am I wrong in that? But something to check. Should that be twenty-two, three sixteen versus...
You mean the verbiage on the agenda versus the, what's written in the actual ordinance?
Right, the section.
Section twenty...
Is it twenty-eight, or should it be twenty-two, three sixteen?
So, an agenda correction will be made for the December tenth meeting to state the twenty-two, three sixteen.
Right. And then, on twenty-two, three thirty-six, it's just, I saw the word coordinator being used and director being used. So, I was a little confused, you know, as to the draft of that.
That I can answer for himself?
Right. No, I didn't think so. Right. It was...
Andy, would you consider that those, if we were to make changes to that which Tony just brought up, is that a substantive, or can we do those things on our December tenth?
I think you can do them at the December tenth public hearing. I think they can be amendments there. We'll take a look at it in the meantime.
Perfect. So, we'll look for that information on December tenth or before. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C two. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five-ten, chapter sixteen, motor vehicles and traffic. Article five, stopping, standing, and parking, section sixteen, one forty-three. And this is for parking prohibited at all times to amend parking on Thame Street. Second reading.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I should note for the record that the, I talked to the administrator yesterday. He did reach out to the representation from the condo association through email, and they did respond back that these changes were very much in keeping with what they were looking for. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C three. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five- eleven, chapter sixteen, motor vehicles and traffic. Article five, stopping, standing, and parking. And this is section sixteen, one forty-three, parking prohibited at all times. This is to include Siegel Street in the residential parking zone. First reading.
I make a motion to constitute this first reading.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D one. This is Director Resenhousen, Bristol Parks and Recreation. And this is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for movie in the park at the men's softball field near the beach for September twenty-sixth from six-thirty to nine.
Welcome, Warren. Are you gonna tell us the movie?
I will this time, yes. All right. So, this time, we're gonna go with a newer, somebody gave me a suggestion of getting something newer. So, this was from two thousand, early two thousand twenty-five, and it's gonna be Despicable Me four.
Ooh, very nice.
Yeah.
I've seen that.
Yeah. So, we decided to move it over to the softball field because of the lighting. At the end of the night, it would be easier. The softball lights will go on. We have a timer on them, and we can set it forty-five minutes, whatever, make sure everybody gets out of their car, and the person can pack up their vehicle, the equipment from the screen and such. So, make it easier, and there's plenty of parking there. So, we just, that's the reason for the move, but yeah, it'll be round two, so.
Outstanding. I know that you were originally thinking Herbie Lovebug, but...
Yeah, somebody whispered in my ear to go something newer, so.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would show up for that one, except for us, right?
Those are classics. I'd definitely go to that. I love those.
It wasn't that old, but I don't remember.
They are good, though.
Good. Counsel?
This is great. Community building. Based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that with the understanding that there's a detail officer to be included in that.
Yep, that was included in the recommendation from the police department, yes.
The only thing I want to say is, Warren, I'm so happy that you approved your own project.
Well, I didn't want to not approve it, so. I didn't want to be that one guy.
You would really have trouble if you said no.
Mary's talking about the council gets recommendations from affected departments, and Warren was very confident that what he was putting in front of us was correct, so. Good for you. Good for you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Excellent. Thanks, Warren.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is D two. This is Camille Take Sarah Bristol Fourth of July Committee, and this is in regards to a bingo license for fundraising on September seventeenth, located at the VFW from five-thirty to eight-thirty.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Don't go too far.
Yeah.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. To approve. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back, Tony.
Getting your steps in, Tony. Could do the George Costanza underneath the desks right there, too, next time, maybe.
The next item on the agenda is E one. This is a three-month review for WKOC LLC doing business as Portside Tavern, Richard Curanty, four forty-four Thame Street, from the modification of the BV intoxicating beverage license for expansion. And this was continued from June eighteenth.
Chief, I think I already, I know the answer already, but just for the public and the record, no issues?
There have been no issues during the three-month review period.
Fantastic. Great news. Just what we wanted to hear, right?
That's exactly right.
I'll make a motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to receive and file. Discussion? Just on a side note, I, I'm glad that this is good news, but I was really hoping that the representation from the business was here. I think that it's very important, and I would expect that representation for the business will be back here in three months as part of the second review. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two. This is the three-month review for Richard Curanty, Portside Tavern, four forty-four Thame Street, for the renewal of the dancing and entertainment license. Additionally, requesting the modification of the license to include the outdoor entertainment and add the secondary interior location, continued from June eighteenth.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to receive and file. Also, no calls, positive outcome, which is what we're looking for.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Discussion?
Yes. The, the recommendation from the police department was for a three-month review.
So, we have a second three-month review, right?
Exactly. Obviously, with the outdoor also be acoustic and just through nine o'clock.
Chief, were those, do you recall new recommendations or the recommendations from three months ago?
Nine PM.
You know, during that three-month period when there was a slated to be an outdoor concert venue, which was ultimately moved indoor, the police department proactively went down and did sound measurements and found that the business was in, within acceptable decibel levels for the music that was being administered inside the establishment. I do believe that we wanted to take a look at, there was a complaint that when the college returns, there was a second wave of music and entertainment that come from the facility with a, as it was reported, with, you know, a heightened noise, and it would give us a secondary opportunity to go back and to make sure that everything was in compliance. But I can certainly report, the good news is Tim's talking about, our meter reads produced that the business was operating within the ordinance language.
Good.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F one. This is Carl Sylvester, operations manor from the Bike to Beach for autism. This is in regards to a cycling event for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is biking through Bristol to raise awareness for autism.
Hi, I'm not Carl. I'm Melissa Parsons. I'm the executive director of Bike to the Beach.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. We've had a partnership with you all in years past. We've been doing this for about thirteen years, going through the area. It's only about ten miles that we travel. We start at Boston University and in Newport. And I think the, the main thing that we're looking for support with is going over the Mount Hope Bridge. I know in the past, we've had a police officer, a detailed police officer, help us bring cyclists safely from the one end of the bridge to the other.
I'm looking through here for the recommendation from the police department. I'm sorry, there was a few pages here, so. Chief, was that, I'm sorry, again?
There was a recommend, there was a recommendation to have the sponsors of the event contact the police department and pay for two detail officers with a cruiser so that we can execute, as she said, a coming over the beach. There was the first, maybe the clerk can help me, for the first time, there was like a sign-off in a waiver type from the petitioners for DPW to sign off that certain things would be done with the roadway and different things with the police department. And I had exchanged emails with the clerk. It looked like I was signing a contract, and I was hesitant to do that. I thought it should go in front of the council. So, I'm not quite sure if you're approving this, if you're approving all of the requests that they had in their email and checkoff list. They won, I believe it was maybe street sweeping and roadway debris to be removed. So, there were some different demands this year with their request, you know, from the town.
So, let's stop right there. So, would, could you speak to the, what the chief brought up?
I actually wasn't aware that there were requests that were different than years prior. So, Carl submitted it. So, I guess anything that would fall in line with what we've asked for in the past would be our ask this year. I'm not sure about the, the extra additional things. I don't, if, if you don't deem that necessary for the safety of the cyclists, then I don't think that that is necessary. And maybe it was just language that was brought in that...
Boilerplate, if you will?
He may have overlooked it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're asked, so is it fair to say then you're asking for what's happened in the past to continue?
Yes.
In that same vein, with the police department's recommendation for two officers, and the police department is asking that you contact them to work directly with them to facilitate that, correct, chief?
That's correct.
Excellent. All right. So, you're comfortable with what's happened in the past?
Yes. Yeah. Yep. And we can, Carl will reach out tomorrow morning and, and get that situated with, with payment and secure those police officers, if that's okay with you, chief?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we're not aware that we have done any street sweeping or anything above and beyond the, making sure that the...
In the past, it hasn't been requested. It was mainly, we got a notification saying that this was going to occur and to have police presence to assist at the, at the bridge. This is the first day that we're receiving these event notifications and sign-off sheets, and that's why those are going in front of the council, because it's out of the ordinary.
Okay.
So, based on the stipulations that were already awarded, I would make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F two. This is Maria Helena de Silva on behalf of Antonio Martin, two oh eight Franklin Street. And this is a request for no bar, no parking box to be placed in front of the residence for accessibility needs.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. To approve. Discussion?
So, I think this would be referred to the solicitor to draft an ordinance to be considered at the council meeting for...
You didn't hear what they said?
I thought I did. I was just making sure.
Yes, we need to create a new one. So, and so, Tim, your motion was amended?
Exactly.
Yes?
Exactly. Just as the clerk said it, yes.
Outstanding. And it was seconded by Mary? Outstanding. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F three. This is Elaine White, Chair of the Bristol Two-hundred-and-fiftieth Commission. And this is in regard to the Town Council consideration for the purchase of banners for the Two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration.
Hi, Elaine.
Hi. I think that I misasked, if that's a word, because I had a great...
We'll make it one. I like it.
I had a great conversation with Carl today, who gave me a lot of enlightenment on what I was supposed to be asking for. And we already have the money put aside for us, so I don't really have to ask for it. I, I spoke with Carl, and he told me how to go about doing it. I wasn't, I, I was not informed on how I was supposed to do it. I didn't do the... I didn't do the due diligence before I wrote this. And actually, what I'm thinking about as I'm looking at this, what I should have been asking is, sure, we can purchase the banners, but does the town council allow us to put them up? And I think I should have asked for that in this, and I don't know if I need to come back in October and ask for it again, because what we were trying to do was when the December, the Christmas banners come down, Paul Valaro had said, it would be great if we just put up our new banners for January going forward and have the two fifty banners. So I don't think I, I don't think I asked for it properly.
Mr. Administrator, you want it to weigh in?
Yeah. I, I know we, the administration has always approved banners for the other committees, so.
It seems right and appropriate to me. I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, good. Oh, so I won't have to come back, as much as I love coming here every now.
Nice recovery. Absolutely great recovery.
And Elaine, we enjoy seeing you.
Thanks a lot.
And the banners look nice.
Yeah, they're really nice, and we're going to do sponsorships this year for them. So I'm hoping all of you will sponsor one. It's going to be a great, great way to get everybody involved in the community and really show the beautiful logo up. So I think we gave you all samples of what the banners look like, right?
Did you figure out which ones are you going to do?
We're not too sure. Do you have a vote that you like on particularly? We're going to do one on one side, one on the other.
Put us on the spot.
Or we're going to go every other. We're not sure yet. But the other question I, I would have for you is, is there some process that I have to do to get that to happen, DPW wise?
Work with the administrator and.
Okay.
He's already, yeah.
Okay. Great.
And just to be clear, so our, our policy in administration is if it's a town board or commission, and that's what you are, or if it's a town council approved event, like the Black Ships Festival, and the application goes to DPW once it's approved here, and they'll work with you.
Okay, so do I have?
We want to make sure we get the right, the sizes right.
Yep, I, I talked to Paul. He helped me with that.
So Eric has, Lauren has the application.
So I have to fill out an application sooner than later so that we know when it is. Okay, great. Thank you. Is that it?
Elaine, just, just very quickly, you did say that you're looking for sponsors. Am I correct?
Yes, Tony.
Maybe you want to state, restate that again, you know, how can people, who will they contact, you know, for the sponsorship?
We will get that information very clear in the, after our September sixteenth meeting, and that will be made quite available on the Explore Bristol website. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking me to clarify.
I just have one, one quick comment that popped into my head, and this is up to all of you. I'm just thinking, you're talking about putting them up in maybe January. I don't know if that's good or bad. I, I think it might depend on how harsh the winter is, and I don't want to see them get ruined up at their, if we get a lot of storms.
It's good that you asked that, because when I did my research on the place that we were buying them from, they are very weather, weatherproofed, so we should be in excellent.
We're not going to get all faded out or.
Unless we have a blizzard of seventy-eight and, or a hurricane or something, or like July third on January, you know, that will be.
We're holding you to that, Elaine.
Who said you didn't do your due diligence?
I know. I did do diligence in buying them. I just forgot to ask you about putting them up. You know, it's one thing to have them, but.
The early visibility is great.
I think so.
I'm glad you're getting the, the banners up early.
Yeah, and if you've been seeing the, the information in the Bristol Phoenix, the, the words of joy, so I hope you all write in there, too, because that's another, another great two fifty project, too. There's a lot of them coming, so.
Excellent.
Stay tuned.
So I would say that we just need a motion from the council to approve the, the hanging of the banners and to work with the administrator to facilitate that, but no dollars need to be spent. We had budgeted the five thousand dollars at time of our yearly budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the Bristol Police Department. This is a request for council contingency funds to support the trunk or treat event on Sunday, October twenty-sixth.
Chief, didn't we already budget this and you don't need the money? Is that what we're doing on this one, too?
Hi, Honorable Members of Town Council. I'm here to ask for contingency funds for our trunk or treat event. It's always a super positive community type event, gets everyone out downtown shopping, things like that. So you guys were very gracious, give us a thousand dollars last year, and we were hoping we'd seem fit if you could provide.
Pay for candy for kids with costumes.
A motion for a thousand?
Second.
Oh, no.
I'm holding you back, though.
So we had a motion to, for another thousand dollars this year, seconded. Discussion?
Well, you've already made the motion. I mean, I would like to redo the motion to twelve hundred.
Tony.
We'll take it.
Is there any other discussion? No?
I just, you know, I think this is a great event. It just creates, strengthens the community's trust. It's a really nice inclusive option for people, and I really like that it's a, a safe option. So if you feel like you're out and you don't want to be out with the kids too late, you know, this is a really great option. And it's just exploded. What I'm hearing, I haven't attended all of them, but they've just grown and grown and grown. It's sort of like.
It's definitely a growing event, that is for sure.
Yeah. So, that's great.
We hope to only continue to grow it from here on out.
And where's, where's it going to be held?
Where, when?
When is October twenty-sixth from one to three, and it's right downtown on State Street? We block off State at Hope and then State at Thames.
It's during the walkabout, right?
So the police department approved blocking the road and making sure officers are there. Do you see a reoccurring theme here with departments approving things? Any other discussion? I'm just joking.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that, you know, the event began during COVID when the children needed, you know, a, a safe place, you know, that had the topography for, you know, a Halloween event. It started at the police station headquarters, and, you know, we had a request to partner with the merchants association so that the business community and the two of us joining forces down there, I'm sure if you have an opportunity to go down, you will see that there'll be standing room only. It will be littered with children and costumes and families, and, and it's a fantastic event. You know, the police department, we try to really turn it up a notch by having characters come down and, and really add to the experience, you know, for the youth of the community. And last year was, it's really heartwarming for, for folks to come down and enjoy a family event, a safe family event. And yes, we do block the road for, for the safety, but it, it always has been blocked by the Bristol merchants during that time when they, when they have their, their event, so. And the police department budget will be providing for a detail officer as well.
Thank you. I love sarcasm. I really do. Is there any other discussion?
I just want to be clear that the, the approval is for twelve hundreds, that would have been?
For one thousand, you are correct.
Yeah. One thousand, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone's around, come to the event, and you'll see what the money is going towards.
It goes to a great cause. We're just joking around. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F five. This is town administrator contingency with a recommendation for no parking extension on Franklin Street, near the vicinity of the elder care parking lot exit.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, thank you. So I've been received some requests from residents in the administration from Franklin Court, the exit. They asked us to revisit their last petition, and we just looked at it. I looked at it, and I think it's best that we extended another five feet. It's difficult. It's a pretty active driveway and exit for the parking lot for elder care one and two. So I'm asking that the ordinance be amended an additional five feet west from from the, I think in the code it's called elder care parking lot.
This is one of those issues that's been around since my time on here, and I'm sure even precedes me, so.
We've, we've, we've entertained this a few times, I believe, but I agreed, you know. The other day I was coming out of there. It was not very easy for visibility, so I make a motion that we approve it.
We refer to. There it is.
Refer to the, the solicitor and the clerk to, is it? No, just.
The administrator?
Yes.
I'll second that.
I'll second, yeah, because it's, it's been a long time.
Well, the thing that worried me the most is, it must have been, we, we did look at this a few years back, and we did extend it a little bit. And I remember the thing that was, I think the scariest was when you would hear them say that they would close their eyes and try to make a turn onto that street. That be, just because they couldn't see what was coming and how fast those vehicles were coming, so.
Yeah, closing eyes is not good.
No.
No.
That's bad. All right, so we had a motion from, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Tony made the motion, and it was seconded by Aaron. Am I right?
Mary, I thought.
Mary, okay. Tony made the motion, seconded by Mary to refer to the solicitor and the administrator to amend the ordinance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is H one. This is the Community Development Director Williamson, and this is the request for the adoption of the resolution regarding the Safe Streets and Roads for All Safety Action Plan. This was continued from August twentieth.
Diane, any other action besides if this council agrees to adopt the resolution? Was there anything else that we needed on this one? And we did, we continued this, refresh my memory, because we needed to because of the timeframe, advertising?
So we continued it because it was a pretty.
Lengthy.
You know, substantial document, and we wanted to give you the opportunity to have the time to review it and see if you had any other edits. So it is now, if you are in support, it, the motion would be to adopt the resolution in support of the plan. And if you recall, once that happens and it gets approved by the other state and federal agencies, we will be eligible then for future grant funds to implement actions in the plan.
All right. So move them?
Yes. Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tony to adopt the resolution as stated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I one. This is the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee. This is the return of Cataras School located at thirty-five Washington Street to the town of Bristol, and in addition to relinquish any and all rights, the lease of the property.
So our next step on this is what? Accept?
Yeah, I would have that. Oh, you need this?
Yes.
Let me to talk. Sorry.
No, you, you can if you want. I, I don't think there's anything, you can't really refuse it. So I think probably receive and file is the action for this one.
So move.
Very surprising, but I'll take it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion?
I just have a question. In here, I'm not seeing the, I know that there were issues in the past with one of the schools not being given back to us in a good condition, and then after that, the other schools were made sure they were like so-called quote unquote buttoned up. And I don't see that in writing here, but has that been discussed? Is there a secondary document or something like that, Steve?
Yeah, we did tour the building, and we actually had a building assessment done on it. I think that's the next item on the agenda. So you'll hear a little bit about the condition of the building. There, one point of order here, one point to this. This doesn't include the field yet in the back. This is only for the building and parking lot. They're still using the field until a new high school is built. So you're going to be getting another letter, I'm assuming, in, in a couple of years, that the field will be turned over to us also. There is a section of the seawall at the field, but that's still under their control. There's a section of seawall that it caved in, so that needs to be repaired, but the building is in good shape. And you're going to hear from our consulting architect about the building.
I just wanted to know if it should be in here, that's all. Like, that we're accepting it in good or certain condition?
It's in good shape. We do have an assessment report. We, we did make sure that the building was good before we. Yeah, they kept it up. It was remodeled about fifteen years ago. It is in very good shape.
Yeah. And the roof was just done, what, two years ago, I believe?
Yeah.
Two, maybe three, most.
Was that recent?
Mary, to take an extra point on that, I, I do know, I know that you do, looking at the next agenda item, that it's in good shape. But to your point is Wally School was given back to the town in deplorable condition, and it was worse afterwards. From that, many years of it sitting there and not taken care of, I'm going to call it out, by the schools, they did not, and they gave it to us in deplorable condition. And then we ended up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to make it weather tight. So I get the point on that. I agree with it. And again, to your point, Reynolds was a marked improvement.
Well, that, and that is because of council intervention.
That is correct. I agree.
So.
I agree. So, but this is, I, I know that Cataras, or I think we all know, looking at the next agenda item, and it's in in really good shape, actually. So, so receive and file is. Any other questions on this? Or she's going to be on the next one.
Move to the next agenda.
Beautiful. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I two. This is Brewster Thornton. This is discussion and presentation regarding the utilization and future use of Cataras School Building.
This could not have been a more timely agenda item. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christine Shay with the Brewster Thornton Group Architects. I'm the community sector leader, and we are the town's on-call architects. We were asked to look at the Cataras School to make sure that before you acquired it, it made sense to do so. We assessed it at a pretty high level, but we found that the building was in excellent condition, especially for being a hundred years old. We found really no issues with it. It is, like you said, it has a new roof, it has new windows, all of the big ticket items that you would normally spend money on are already taken care of. So we feel like it, it's also a beautiful school. It's a, you know, unmatched location. It screams town hall, so if that's the way that you want to move forward, we would be fully in support of that. And like I said, we found no red flags.
So I'm going to take a moment just to kind of push this forward, is that this was, this is in front of us as much, mostly to put it out to the public, to say that this is a consideration for next steps for the use of the building. You just heard that the building is coming back to the town. I think that was widely known that the school was no longer in need of it because of lessening students, student population. So this was, I think, probably all of our minds. I certainly, and I'm not alone with this, I know my colleagues have also said this to me, that many people have said, why wouldn't you make this a town hall? So there seems to be a collective idea behind that. And certainly we'll talk more about it, but, so you're here tonight to kind of, we want you to tell the public, and we want to tell the public what the next steps are here, why we're considering this, why this is a good decision, what would it look like, high level at this point? So floor's yours.
Sure. Well, the exterior of the building, like I said, screams town hall. The location is excellent. So then we kind of, you know, once we've looked at the outside of the building, and we know that there aren't any red flags or things that you're going to have to drown money in for the next fifty years or whatever it is, we go to the inside and does the program make sense for this building? The town hall plus the first floor of the Reynolds Building is the program that we looked at. Right now, everything is undersized, so in order to right-size all of these spaces and look to the future and make sure you have enough space for five, ten, twenty years, we programmed the space, and I can show you the floor plans. I'm sure you guys have copies of these. Again, just at a high level to make sure it all fits. All right. You guys already have these.
We'll make sure that these, for the public, we'll make sure that these are available, not only here, but most likely on the website, too, so people can look at it at their own time.
Christine, I can hold those up if you want to point things, anything out.
Yeah, sure. That would be wonderful. But basically, we just put all of the program spaces, right-sized all of the offices and other spaces, conference rooms, to see if it would fit. We also would know, you know, when we spoke with Nate, you had asked why we wouldn't have demoed the interior corridor walls. We're just trying to be economically efficient. Those are structural walls, so to keep, not only with the historic nature of the building, but to infill at as low cost as we could and be economical about it. We tried to fit all the spaces within those classrooms and surrounding areas. So the first floor, clerks, deputy clerk, town, town clerk, basically, you're going to see kind of the head of each department has a, a larger office at each corner of the building. And then we have what you would normally see where you come in much like this to an interior space to then be. And then we have what you would normally see where you come in much like this to an interior space to then be greeted by those folks. We also have the gym area, which can stay a gym area for the town. It can also be an overflow meeting space if you have a contentious meeting or a large meeting. But overall, it's going to be, thank you. The conference room on the second floor is more than enough to have these types of meetings and council meetings, as well as planning boards or any of your other board meetings.
The, could the town gym be used as a theater as well?
Absolutely. So it's already set up for K-12 spaces like that and to do their theater program, their gym program. It's accessible. It has the AVIT already installed. It's, it's perfect for, to be adaptable for anything you guys need. Great. Yeah, sure. Those are just some photos of the exterior and then the interior classroom and corridor spaces. There's not a lot that has to be done for the interiors, build some walls, you know? If we could take the next step and kind of get rid of some of the interior finishes, like the flooring, so that it looks less like a school and more like a town hall, that would be, you know, something that we could work through depending on the initial budget. But overall, like I said, it's perfect.
So for myself, I think that, that on first glance, this is certainly done very thoughtfully. For example, the town clerk pointed out that the vault needs to be out of the flood zone, if you will, on the first floor. I mean, that's one of many examples of how this was thought out. And that's happened in this scenario that's in front of us. Bigger picture, we talked about the gym a couple of times. Having the gym available to, and the administrator made this point, of kids that live downtown and on a, whether it's summer or winter, it doesn't matter. If it's an inclement day, they're not going to walk to Quinta Gamble. So having a place where we used to have a long time ago, Maritime Center, used to have basketball court, and that's not there anymore. It's not a bad thing. It's a wonderful use of the, but that, that need is still there. So having, having this there downtown in a municipal building that is in concert with town government, I love that. I love it isn't kids stay over here, government's over there. It's intermingled. That is wonderful to me. I love that it's a prominent building. I love that it would stay in the public access. I love that it's a wonderful place for a Fourth of July staging area, not only for police, fire, rescue, but just for floats and things that we need, right? So all in all, I think it's a, it's an outstanding first step into multiple steps. I think it's a great use of the building. And for myself, as you can't tell, I don't know if you can tell, I love it. I think it's a great next step.
And code-wise, I should note that it's a school, which is usually the most stringent. So taking a step down to a town hall is significantly easier than some other programs, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
While Christine is here, I want to ask if she could talk a little bit about the building assessment by the engineering firm? And also the rumors that we've heard for years that the building is sinking into the harbor. Could you, could you talk about that?
It's definitely not sinking, so. Yeah, we did a pretty high-level building assessment, but we found no structural issues. The only thing that we pointed out in our field report is that there's very typical non-red flag cracking in the exterior of the building. It's 100 years old. This is what happens when you have metal, steel behind masonry. That masonry will expand and it cracks the, or the steel expands and it will crack the masonry. This is a 15 to 20-year, I say, you know, maintenance issue. There's nothing of immediate concern and it's very typical of a building of this design. But, you know, the roof is in great shape, windows are new, building systems are in great shape. That's a huge cost. But we saw no signs of any sinking or major issues.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm going to refer the question to Diane. Actually, a flood plain, is the building in a flood plain?
We did have an elevation certificate and it is in the flood zone.
Okay. But the, the building itself never flooded from, you know, the Washington Silver Creek in past years that we're aware of, right? The building sits high in that area.
Yes.
Just wanted, those, those are the things I hear about the building.
Thank you. I know that the council's going to have a lot of questions. I know the public probably will also have a lot of questions, things that were sitting in a town hall right now. So one of the obvious ones is what happens, right? Do we divest ourself of this building? Do we sell it, right? Do we keep it? Do we use it for another purpose? Do we take it down and use it for a different purpose? For clarity, Burnside Building is not the town hall. So the brownstone in front, even though it kind of feels like it's all one town hall, this is the town hall, what used to be a garage. So the Burnside Building, regardless of what happens with all of this, would still be a town building along with the War Garden and all of that. So, but there's a lot of questions, reasonable and right questions, that we will get to and we will put in, in the public forum. My colleagues and I, administrator, will discuss those, including what do we do with this building? What are the next steps? Funding for that? There are a lot of good answers to all of that. But this was the first step and very important to get out into the public, so the public can see it, consider it, such and so forth. But colleagues, thoughts?
As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, you know, certainly we could go down the path of asking many questions at this point in time. However, I think it would be prudent for us to hold off and, you know, let's continue to explore what we need to and get, see what the public's response is. I think it's fair to say that we did not approach this with blinders. We did look at some options, you know? And certainly, this was one of those that we considered in the, I think would be very appropriate, you know, for the, as a town hall there as well. So I support that. However, we need to continue to explore and get more, more information.
I just had my comment. Basically, I think it's good timing, only because we've been talking about moving to Reynolds School and have like a couple of offices already there, along with the school department administration building. So I think when this came up, I think it took a little bit of, took many people by surprise that this was going to be decommissioned as school. And it just sort of, I agree with you, like shouts out at, this is like a great town hall location. It's right at the entrance to the downtown. And it's like, you know, fortunately, we haven't made too many moves like towards moving to another building. So it's definitely good that we can consider all of this at the same time. And I think it's great news to hear that it's in excellent shape. I mean, I think that's terrific of all the big-ticket items that you've mentioned. So I, I agree with Tony, like put it out there and see what people's reaction was. Certainly when this became an issue, you know, everybody was like, this could be a town hall, you know? So we have to see now that it is a really like a reality that it could be. And it's got plenty of parking, it's got potential fields that, you know, we, we always, we always need fields anyway, so they would stay as town fields, you know? But I think it's a, a great alternative and something to really like look at. And hopefully there'll be like a nice spread on this, these potential plans, as preliminary as they are. You know, obviously things are going to shift it around, probably have to talk more to the departments and find out what they would all need and so forth if we were to move forward. But I do think it's like, thank goodness it's happening when it's happening and not like when we've already just renovated another building and moved in and now we have this opportunity.
And I would just like to comment that, yeah, basically, Geteras has been part of the town's history for generations, right? And I'm just so thrilled that we're able to bring it back under the town's care and we're able to have it in a meaningful way become the town hall. And in a way, it really becomes part of the community once again and benefit the community. And not a lot of towns have that type of story for some of these buildings. So I'm really happy we're moving in this direction and I'm thrilled to hear that the building's in good, good shape. And I just had a question in regards to the parking lot going around it. Is it, is there any flooding issues there or?
We haven't assessed that as part of ours.
Okay, all right. Yeah. Right. Good to know. But anyway, I'm, I'm in support of moving forward.
So our next step, in my opinion, I'm not sure if my colleagues agree, is this, it becomes, it comes back to the town October 1st. So we can receive and file today on this and then have a subsequent meeting. There are, as we've all spoken about, a lot of questions. Mary actually brought up another one is what happens with Reynolds, because we have town offices there. And the, potentially the school and most likely, I should say, the school would, the administration would take over the full building, which they do need some extra space. So it's a very appropriate way of taking the next step. There's a lot of requirements that we have. So for example, Wally, we can't sell. Byfield, we can't sell. But Reynolds, we can. I'm not suggesting we are, but it just, there's, there's a lot of moving parts on this and there's a lot of questions. And we've, this council, the administrator, has taken a lot of efforts to divest ourselves for, of buildings that we don't need anymore. So we save on maintenance, we save on heating costs, we save on so many other things. That's not a joyful statement. I know we all took very seriously when we sold Oliver and looking at it as a beautiful little building. And it wasn't done lightly, but it was appropriate. And now it's going to be, it's going to include affordable housing, but it is all housing, which is wonderful. So that, my point is, bringing that up is that there are a lot of moving parts, but this is not a bad thing. This is an opportunity that a lot of communities don't get. We're not purchasing a piece of property, we're getting it, getting it back. And this was from the kindness and the generosity of the Geteras family. And we'll continue to celebrate that gift to the town and we'll make sure we hold that in the highest regard. So, so unless there's other dialogue, I can, I think we can receive and file and set a potential that probably closer to the end of October, we can have another discussion about this.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, receive and file. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Christine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3. This is Town Administrator Contenti, and this is in regards to discussion and consideration for Building Department Shared Services with the town of Warren.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. As you know, our building official Steve Greenleaf has retired from full-time employment. We do use an alternate. It's the building official from Warren, so that's who's currently serving Bristol. And I have been working with the town manager from Warren to come up with a plan to share services in the building department. So the plan would be, we would, we would use Warren's building official and the certification that he has. And in return, we would support Warren with an inspector in also code compliance. So inspection and code compliance. What that allows us to do is to hire somebody that may not have the CBO license, Certified Building Official License, which takes three years to obtain. And the alternate building official who's serving Bristol from Warren, he'd be able to train and shadow that person to get them certified. And so it's, it's a win for Warren, it's a win for Bristol. And I did speak again to the town manager this morning and the town council in Warren brought it up on their agenda last night and they approved to move forward.
Excellent.
So my, my ask after discussion would be to, I know the solicitors have also been talking, the Bristol Solicitor and the Warren Solicitor, would be to draft an MOU and bring it to you at the next council meeting. So there'd be a six-month trial, so we can renew after six months if it's working. But it's a big, big win for us if we can get this accomplished. There are not a lot of building officials. There are building officials that are working for companies, so we could hire somebody, but it's very expensive and they're not here in the office every day. So I think this is the shared services idea with Bristol and Warren, I think it's worth an attempt and I think it's going to be successful. So I'm asking, I'm asking for the, you know, an MOU to be drafted if you
Will that, are the administrative work with the solicitor, to draft an MOU that we share services with?
With Warren around this topic of the building inspector and on a trial basis. And if it works, we can revisit.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony as stated. Discussion?
I was just going to point out that I've, I've heard in my circles that there is that major workforce shortage of building inspectors. I think one of the questions I have is, do we, do we feel pretty good that, you know, by having these, having us work together with another town, we'll still have the capacity to get things approved and permitted and inspected in a, just as timely as a fashion as we had before?
Yeah, so our budget won't change, so we still have a full-time, well, we're going to hire an inspector, which he or she won't be a CBO from the looks of it. We've already advertised, we didn't get anyone that's certified. So we would hire somebody and we also have a part-time code compliance. Warren has a building official. So I, I don't, I don't see us losing man-hour, man-hour, so.
So you believe that it would be the
I think you're going to see
Same quality service?
Yes.
The quality will still be there, yes.
So no, like backlogs or anything like that?
In fact, the building official in Warren, as I said, he's an alternate right now for Bristol. He fills in for our inspector, so he's already been in the office. He's, I talked to him this morning. He is up to speed. There's no backlog right now in inspections, but there are plan reviews coming, so he's going to have to start working on the plan reviews. But it'll, it'll free, it'll free him, the official up to have an inspector out there on the road during the day. So I, I think shared service is going to be very useful. Especially when one of them is on vacation, should be very helpful for both towns.
Well, it probably happens in a lot of other parts of the country where they're doing this and things like that. And certainly there's probably other types of services in Rhode Island that are being shared between municipalities. So it's definitely worth looking at.
Andy?
Definitely an efficient way to use resources. And if we're not going to lose any timing as far as inspections goes, then I think it's a win, to win win on this one.
Andy?
I, I think based on correspondence from the Warren Town Solicitor, that the Warren Town Council already approved it, just subject to the solicitor's review of the MOU language. So I don't know if you want to, again, approve it, subject to the solicitor and the administrator's review of the MOU language? Or do you want the MOU to actually come back to you at a future meeting?
I prefer it to come back in front of us, to be quite honest, just as stated.
Okay.
As the motion was already. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing no other? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I4. This is the public notice from CRMC in regards to Aaron and Stephen Sears, 68 King Philip Avenue, that requires response by September 13th.
Based on the recommendation, make a motion to receive on this one? We approve?
Received.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion?
Yes. Do we have a recommendation from the Harbor Commission on this?
I see we have one from the Harbor Master.
From the Harbor Master.
Harbor Master is the one I'm looking at.
We did not get one from the Harbor Commission, and I don't know if it was timing from the date that we received it.
I don't think we usually get one. I think we usually get one from just the Harbor Master. And usually they're pretty straightforward unless there's a problem that they have with it, then we may get more information.
We do get them from the Harbor Commission. I believe that when this one came in and in according with their regular scheduled meeting, they, they didn't have sufficient time to put that on the meeting. I did not receive a recommendation from the Harbor Commission.
So we had discussion and Tony brought it up at our last meeting and then we all concurred about the, what seems to be much more of these requests on it? Is the, Mary, I believe you brought up about having the Harbor Commission come in front of this council to have a joint discussion about, kind of talking about what might be more sensitive areas and just so we were all on the same page. So I think that, I think that's an appropriate thing we can go in into. I can talk with the chairman of the Harbor Commission, see if we can schedule a time, possibly our next meeting and the meeting after. And I know And uh, I know, Mr. Administrator, you want to share something, um, but I can have that come in our next meeting and the meeting after. Um, and possibly, and, and have that discussion and also maybe a greater discussion about, do we see these happening more and more? How do we want to handle this? Um, we don't make the call, but we certainly have a lot of voice in its recommendation. And if we have concern about it, I know it is heard. So I think it's worthy that we take this extra point and we've all concurred and I've already expressed that, but Mr. Administrator, you want to share something?
Uh, I know I had the conversation with the Harbor Master about this and I was checking my, my email. It was approved by the Harbor Commission, sixty-eight King Philip on Monday.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for sharing.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
You were trying to stop me throughout that whole thing and I could have just got there, alright, sorry, okay. Any other discussion?
No, I, I think that's a great direction because I think you're right. I think, Mary, you touched on um, last time and I thought it was great that you touched on it. It's sort of like a master plan of what, what the harbor would look like 'cause we'll wake up and there's gonna be ninety docks going down, down, down the harbor. I'm gonna say, oh my God, how did this happen? How did we get so many coming so quickly? But there was no real, no rhyme or reason or plan, so um, I just wanna say, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Perfect.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J one. This is bid ten seventy. Well, reconstruction of Burnside Street. And so this is actually bid ten seventy. It's the Burnside Streetscape Plan. We had the bid opening today at twelve o'clock. We did have one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight bids um, for this. The first one was from De Amber Construction and the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. We also had one from T Mizoni LLC and the amount of three hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred seven dollars and fifty cents. The third one was from Naraganta Improvement Company and the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The fourth one was from J H Lynch and Sons Inc. and the amount of three hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. The fifth one was from LAL Construction Company Inc. and the amount of four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and twenty cents. The sixth one was from True North Civil LLC and the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. The next one was from Hartford Paving Corporation and the amount of four hundred seven thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. And the last one was from JML Escavation Inc. and the amount of three hundred one thousand, one hundred and sixty.
At least they pretty close this time, you know, there's no, not a large disparity.
Crazy outliers.
Right. Um, I make a motion that we refer this to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, discussion. Mr. Administrator, remind me, I'm sorry if everybody else knows this, would the Burnside Streetscape project is?
Um, pedestrian improvements, parking improvements, uh, curbing sidewalk, relocation of the uh, utility poles.
Oh, thank God.
Um, and it's gonna uh, blend in well with the DOT project on Hope Street and that's completed. So we're working in conjunction with them.
Amazing, amazing.
I love new curbing too.
When you said.
Um, most importantly, most importantly, Diana reminded me, it was a grant, commerce, right? Commerce grant, yeah.
Great, great.
Similar to the Gooding Avenue uh, grant, which is a streetscape.
Outstanding. I love grants. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yes, the relocation of the poles, you're not talking about burying, why is the I U by any chance? I wish that's where it was.
No, they're gonna be moved. I think it's three poles that are gonna get moved to the north side of the road. Um, so that we can utilize the sidewalk a little bit better. It's better engineered, but the poles are in the way.
Outstanding. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J two. This is bid number ten seventy-one, the multi- the multidisciplinary planning consulting firm for the Bristol Comprehensive Update Plan. We had the bid opening today at four. We received four bids. The first bid was from FHI Studio I M E G Consulting Group and the amount of ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. The second one was from Weston and Sampson and the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The third one was from A B Planning and Mapping and the amount of eighty-five thousand, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And the last one was from Redantis and the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand.
Make a motion to refer this to the town administrator and the director of uh, community to act in the best interest of the town.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman.
Any opposed?
No, 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 no. No, it's just uh, interesting. There's a couple of familiar, very familiar names on this list, so yeah, will be interesting.
We're ten years again, are we? That's crazy. Wow. Man, alright.
It'll be my first one.
Really?
Yep, my first one, yeah.
That's, I've lived through a few of these.
The next item on the agenda is K one. This is the Bristol County Water Authority Try Town Monthly Report for August and the twenty-twenty-five annual report.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion?
Uh, just very briefly, I, I don't think they uh, their next meeting, they have it scheduled for September eighteenth. Thursday, September eighteenth. Unfortunately, eighteenth is a Sunday, so the Thursday is a, I think, the fifteenth or sixteenth, so. But anyway, I'm hoping that they uh, take notice of that.
That would be important.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, we're at the end of the regular meeting. We have executive session. We will complete our meeting in public session, but we will end the video now, so good night, everyone watching on TV.
Thank you.
Uh, sorry, yeah, we'll go into executive session now. Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, um, I would request a motion to enter into executive session at the request of the town administrator pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five, small paren A, small paren five. Discussion of consideration related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property where in advance public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public.
You read a lot more than Mike does.
You get more for your money. Counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Night.